This regular board meeting of the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD Board of Trustees is called to order at 7:01 PM on December the 11th, 2014. At this time, please join me in standing as Richard Fleming leads the board opening prayer and remains standing for Ms. Nancy Watten to lead us in a pledge to the U.S. and Texas flag.
Please bow your heads, please. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day that you bring us. May you always give us the wisdom to make the right decision and give us the inspiration to meet the needs of the future. Continue to guide our students and give them vision. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to you, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Please be seated. Allow me a couple of minutes of administrative information. As a district, we dedicate all of our effort and resources to our goal of high achievement for all students. And the board uses this goal to direct us in all of our deliberation decisions and actions. You will get to see all deliberation, actions, and decisions of the board in open session, with the exception of some items which may be discussed in closed session, as stipulated in the Texas Government Code, Section 551, which is commonly known as the open meeting law. And these items typically deal with personnel matters, consultation with attorneys in real estate. For the record, all board members are here and we do constitute a forum and can conduct business on behalf of the school district. Also, as required by Board Policy BBD Local, at each meeting of the board, I will announce that, and the minutes will reflect, the name of each board member who has completed the required training, who has exceeded required hours of training, or who is deficient in the required training as of the date of the meeting before any vote of the board is taken. Let the minutes reflect, at this time, that all members of the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD Board of Trustees have completed and have exceeded the annual requirement for school board members continuing education credits for 2014. Now, with that being said, we'll move into what's more enjoyable and pleasant. And with that, we're going to go to Agenda Item 2, and I will turn that over to Dr. Burns.
Thank you, Mr. Goode, members of the board. Welcome guests. We always like it when it's standing room only, so thank you for being here. You know, we know time is valuable, so we are honored that you chose to spend some of your time with us tonight, so thank you for being here. At this time, we're going to talk about our VIPs. And we've been doing VIPs for a long time in this school district, and what we've finally decided is it's really an act of gratitude to thank them. That's why we do the recognition, and we believe it's important to always kind of state the why behind things. Well, our VIPs, and the why we recognize them is to thank them for all of their hard work. But you know, thanking is not enough. You need to have an act of gratitude to be sufficient and to express your appreciation. So tonight, this ceremony is about our VIPs and our gratitude to them for all of their hard work and effort. They give so much of their time to help our students reach our goal of high achievement for all, for all students, our goal. And so, tonight, we invite those that are here, friends and family, please stand when your VIP is introduced, so that you can join us in this act of gratitude. And now, at this time, Mr. Goode, will you join me in the front to greet our VIPs?
Good evening, Board of Trustees and Dr. Burns. My name is Kim Chow Jackson, Principal at Blair Elementary. It is my pleasure tonight to introduce to you our newest member into the very important profession of teaching, Heather Robison. Heather joined the CFB Teaching Family in 2010 as a 5th grade teacher at Blair, where she continues this important calling today as an ESL teacher in math and science. Heather epitomizes the attributes of a member in our VIP program. She carries out the district goal of high achievement for all students with enthusiasm. Everything that Mrs. Robison learns, she applies, from glad strategies to talk moves. Her classes are filled with English language learners who thrive in her room because she is the kind of teacher that goes above and beyond to ensure her students learn. She effectively uses ELL accommodations to make certain that her kids are understanding. Mrs. Robison knows her students academically as well as personally. She sets high expectations for them, for them, and knows how to help them achieve at high levels. One particular reluctant student for whom Mrs. Robison made a difference wrote her a letter expressing how much he had grown as a learner because she was his teacher. When I asked Heather what inspires her to be the best teacher possible, she responded with, "The kids. They are the motivation to come to work and work hard every day. The growth they make each year makes this work worth doing." Mrs. Robison not only makes a difference in the lives of children, but also in the lives of her colleagues. She is the team leader, she helps organize track and field, 5th grade graduation, and endless other endeavors, all while being a wife and mother of a precious 1 and 1/2-year-old named Logan. Her peers hold her in the highest regard and describe Mrs. Robison as helpful, passionate, a problem solver, respectful, trustworthy, and powerful in the classroom. A first-year teacher described Heather as an exceptional team leader, and I quote, "I was impressed by Heather's high standards, collegial manner, extraordinary time management skills, efficiency, effectiveness, and how fiercely focused on excellence she is. Who wouldn't want to work with someone like that?" We are truly fortunate that Mrs. Robison chose CFB as her home. The Blair family, along with her husband Chris, who is present in the audience, and Logan, her son, would like to thank Heather for all she does every single day to enrich the lives of our CFB students.
Good evening, Mr. Goode, Dr. Burns, and members of the board. My name is Susan Machado, Principal of Farmers Branch Elementary. I would like to introduce you to our newest member in the very important profession of teaching, Mrs. Monica Ellison. Monica is in her 10th year of teaching, and five of those years have been at FBE. All of her teaching experience has been in 3rd and 4th grade, and she has, she is truly a natural. She's a graduate of the University of Dallas. When she isn't pouring her time and energy into her students, she is busy with her husband Josh and their three children, Grayson, Georgia, and Gavin, all under the age of five. Don't know how she does it. Monica is held in the highest regard among her colleagues. One of them stated, "Monica deserves this honor for numerous reasons. She's an incredibly hard worker and willing to do whatever it takes to make sure that her students succeed. Monica is always willing to help in any way she can, and she's a phenomenal teammate." Another colleague declared, "Mrs. Ellison goes above and beyond to increase student achievement. This year, she began an inner-school mail system called Mustang Mail. We're hoping that this will encourage our students to write more, as well as build friendships and relationships within our school." And it has, because we have tons of letters every Friday. You did your delivery today. Monica always has a smile, a positive attitude, and she makes everyone around her feel good. I have never seen Monica have a bad day. Some of our FBE Mustangs shared their thoughts with me about Mrs. Ellison. When asked why he liked Mrs. Ellison's class, Lupe replied, "When she teaches us math, we get gooder and gooder." I didn't, I just let that go. Not English, right? Christian explained, "One time, I was confused trying to understand what was happening in my math problem. I didn't know whether to multiply or divide, but Mrs. Ellison helped me and did not tell me the answer." Abby said, "Learning is fun because we do science experiments. One time, we even used lettuce." Gabriel stated, "Mrs. Ellison is super-nice, funny, and sometimes even silly. When it's time to switch classes, she'll say, 'Get out of here,' but she's only kidding. She really loves us." And that's exactly how he said it. Farmers Branch Elementary and CFB are fortunate to have Mrs. Monica Ellison as a member of the very important profession of teaching.
My name is Lori Parker. I'm the Principal at Ferno Elementary, and the staff at Ferno Elementary are proud to recognize Mr. Ben Howard for the award of the very important profession of teaching. When Dr. Burns was visiting Ferno a few weeks ago, I told him, "Do you ever feel like, when you hire someone, wow, that was a great hire? Well, that is how I feel about Mr. Howard." I was first introduced to Ben at the district job fair by the Director of Fine Arts for CFB Brett Farr. Ben was currently in his second year as the Associate Director of Bands at Perry Middle School. A great first impression, I thought. He is outgoing, very positive, professional, funny, huh, kind of like me. This could work. When I interviewed him a few days, a few days later, I was blown away by his resume and accomplishments. After attending the University of Michigan and graduating from Asbury College in Kentucky, Ben served as the Fine Arts Director for the Salvation Army in Michigan and then in Texas overseeing all vocal, instrumental, creative arts, hiring, fundraising, and the list goes on. His musical achievements include a two-time semifinalist at the Falcone International Euphonium Solo Contest, which is one of the most prestigious competitions for the euphonium. He is also the youngest ever participant in the competition. Ben is also the Principal Euphonium for the Carrollton Wind Symphony and the Dallas Civic Winds Ensemble, as well as a member of the Salvation Army Territorial Band. Mr. Howard has performed on four continents. After the announcement was made that Mr. Howard will be our VIP, I began asking the typical questions, so I could begin writing this script. And my first question, "Where did you meet your wife Shannon?" "We were childhood friends," he said, "and attended the same college. Shannon is smarter than me. She graduated on time." And Shannon is here this evening. Ben and his wife Shannon have two children, Ellie and Jack. "What do you do in your spare time?" I asked. He goes, "I don't have spare time. What do you do when you have kids?" "I sleep. I drink coffee. I make an occasional smoothie." But Ben also enjoys running, woodworking, and volunteers with the Salvation Army, and you just might see him this holiday season near a Salvation Army red kettle. What Ben didn't mention was he is very tech savvy and talented. Check out our EPTV YouTube channel. Very entertaining and showcases the great things happening at Ferno. I also asked him, "What instruments do you play?" He said, "Um, you do know I was a band director, right? I play them all, so now I know that." Mr. Howard came to the office one day, and we all stopped and looked up, never knowing if he was going to be playing the recorder, about to break into song, playing Edelweiss on the guitar, or a random song on the trombone. When he continued to walk through with just a simple friendly hello, instead, we were a little let down and asked him what was wrong. "Oh, I completed the tough mutter yesterday for the second time. I think I broke a couple of ribs, but I'm fine." And he just went on. So another thing he does is the tough mutter. "I don't think I understand what it is. I think you just like, do a marathon in the mud, pretty much. I think that's what it is." Yeah. All right. A team member said, "Mr. Howard is one of those people you hear about in fairy tales that never has a bad day. He sets a great example for the kiddos, as well as the teachers, for how to enjoy every single day. A positive attitude topped with an extra dose of comedic value. Truly an asset to any school, not only for what he does in the music room, for the school as a whole as well." Ben's positive spirit and knowledge of music has helped to create a dynamic environment where students experience the joy of making music while learning the fundamental elements that will make them successful in the future. Ben's caring attitude and team vision is greatly appreciated. Know that we are grateful and proud of your service to Ferno, Fine Arts, and CFB ISD. Ferno Elementary and Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD are fortunate to have Ben Howard as a member of the very important profession of teaching.
My name is Dawn Rink, and I am the Principal of McCoy Elementary School. It is my pleasure this evening to introduce Mrs. Nancy White as a member of the very important profession of teaching. Nancy is a 5th grade lead teacher at McCoy and has been at our campus for 11 years, and overall has 20 years teaching experience in CFB. In an AP American Studies class, students were asked to reflect upon teachers who positively influenced their lives. Ally wrote her letter about Mrs. White. "I would like to start with saying, 'Thank you for everything you did for me while I was in your class, way back in 3rd and 5th grade. Even after all of these years and teachers I have had, you have made the greatest impact in my life. Now, as a 16-year-old, 11th grader, I still go back to you for help. If that doesn't say something, I'm not sure what will, but I'll go ahead and try. You know me better than I know myself at times. Probably because you watched me grow and face my first obstacles in my educational life. You were also the one who helped me overcome all of them with advice on future obstacles. We just finished watching Dead Poets Society, and the boys' appreciation and admiration for Mr. Keating is equal to mine for you. I can never thank you enough for the positive influence you've made in my life, and for that, you will forever have a place in my heart. I hope your students, after me, understand how truly blessed they are to have you as a teacher." A middle school student shared this about Mrs. White. "Mrs. White is really special to me because she taught me for two years straight. She made me feel like I was her favorite student. She's like a grandmother. She's gentle but firm. If I did something wrong, I would know it. She was a really good teacher. Honestly, she really knows how to get kids to work. It was fun the way she formatted the lessons for her students. She picked the least droning work and gave us more hands-on projects and tasks. She asked us to think about how what we were doing actually related to real life. She made school better for me. I finally passed my classes because I enjoyed them. Mrs. White is my favorite teacher. Next to my mom and grandmother, Mrs. White is the third most important person in the world to me." McCoy Elementary School, Advanced Academic Services, and CFB are indeed fortunate to have Mrs. Nancy White as a member of the very important profession of teaching.
Good evening, Dr. Burns, members of the board, colleagues, and guests. My name is Michael Arriola, and it is my honor to serve as the Principal of the Early College High School at Brookhaven College. Tonight, it's also my honor to recognize our 2014-15 VIP, Mrs. Susan Freed. Mrs. Freed has been a member of the CFB family for two years, but has served in education for over 13 years. As a member of the ECHS family, Mrs. Freed teaches Algebra II, Precalculus, and Advanced Quantitative Reasoning. Mrs. Freed also serves as the school's mother, big sister, and caretaker. As one colleague stated, "Every so often, life gives us the privilege of working with impressive professionals, professionals who inspire and encourage others by their ability to excel." Mrs. Freed is one such professional. She aims high, works hard, and yet has the willingness to pause and help others along the way. Another colleague says, "Mrs. Freed is a great friend, confidant, and mentor to me. She is kind and focused on her students' success. She works hard and smart and is always smiling. Mrs. Freed makes me feel like I can do anything." Her students said, quote, "My perfect little angels," as she calls them, "she is a wonderful person and very sweet to everyone. She's also great at teaching. She makes math look easy." Impressive. The following sums up Miss Freed. Mrs. Freed equals, awesome parentheses, kind, plus, good math teacher parentheses cubed, plus funny. One student says, "One of the nicest and most patient teachers I've ever had. She will make sure that you learn the material and also make sure that you walk out of her room with a big smile, even after a long math lesson." And finally, this story sums up Miss Freed and her contributions to our, to our school and our community. "I remember my junior year, I had Mrs. Freed for algebra, and this one day, we had a test. We had time to review before, before the test on our own. She was walking around the classroom as we did this, and she saw that I was upset because I knew that I was going to do bad on the test. She came to me asking me what was wrong. I explained to her, 'I didn't know anything, and I thought I was going to fail.' She sat down with me five minutes before the test and went over every question on the review. I got an A on that test. She didn't have to do that for me, but I'm thankful that she did. She is a great teacher with a great personality, and she deserves it." It is my honor to recognize Mrs. Susan Freed as a 2014-15 VIP for Early College High School.
to help our community be better, also help our students be better students. But we've talked a lot about schools can't do it alone, and I believe this organization steps up more than any to make sure we're not alone. So tonight, the Metrocrest Services, as one of our partners will be recognized, and at this time, I'm going to ask Tracy Eubanks, my good friend, and the people from Metrocrest Services to come forward, and Ms. Nancy Klein is going to read a little about our thankfulness for you. We've come up.
Tonight, we recognize Metrocrest Services for their involvement in our partnership and education program. We are fortunate to have-
Such an outstanding relationship with Metrocrest, an organization that serves. Metrocrest Services provides a wide range of emergency aid, financial assistance, and services to support independent living for individuals, families, and senior citizens. Our partnership is an example of what is possible when a public school and caring individuals work together for the welfare of our community's youth. The CFB Board of Trustees would like to express our gratitude to Metrocrest Services for assisting our students and supporting our schools. Metrocrest has been serving our community for 37 years by providing food, clothing, school supplies, uniforms, and many other services to aid in our students' success and well-being. Metrocrest Services and CFB ISD have a procedure in place to identify our students in need through our school counselors. Once a student is identified, CFB counselors refer them to Metrocrest Services. Metrocrest will then provide necessities and, at times, counsel the families to create a plan to assist them during this difficult time. The list of things that Metrocrest Services has done over the years is endless, but we want to take this time to name a couple. Because many of our students are less likely to have a healthy and consistent diet over the summer months, Metrocrest feeds our students through their Saks Summer Hunger Program. Through this program, students receive a backpack filled with food items. This past summer alone, Metrocrest served over 99,000, that's 99,000, meals to kids in our community through the Saks Summer Hunger Program. Preparing to send students back to school in August is a hardship for many CFB families. For years, Metrocrest has served families in need by providing school supplies, uniforms, and clothing. This year, Metrocrest hosted the first back-to-school celebration, that's the way to get them back to school, right, Dr. Burns? In our own ESDC gym facility. Through the program, our students were eligible to receive school supplies, clothing, and food, along with medical, dental, and eye exams. They even received haircuts at the back-to-school celebration. What an awesome event. This event was such a success that it will become an annual event thanks to Metrocrest and the generous, generous financial donations from our community. Metrocrest also provides families the opportunity to receive items for the holidays such as food, toys, and other necessities. These items are donated by community members and area businesses to help students and families have a meaningful and healthy holiday experience. This year, Metrocrest and CFB Council PTA reached an agreement for Metrocrest to distribute clothing needs through their retail resale store on Trinity Mills in Carrollton. This will serve families who were served through our PTA Clothes Closet in the past. Metrocrest also serves our community's senior citizens by providing meals, home repair, and transportation. Metrocrest also provides assistance with employment, utility bills, and living expenses as they lead citizens to independence and stability. As CFB ISD, we teach our students the value of community service. Metrocrest has helped CFB students over the years by providing the volunteer opportunities necessary for our students to learn to serve in the community where they live. We would be remiss if we didn't encourage this audience to continue to give of your time, talent, and treasure to such a worthy and important organization. The benefits our students and families receive through the assistance of Metrocrest Services greatly impacts our student achievement, and they are a perfect example of how to back the future. We are grateful that Metrocrest Services has chosen to partner with and support the students and families in our school district. They've cared for the health and well-being of our students and families in so many ways, which we know produces a strong and healthy learning environment, right, Mr. Shore? On behalf of the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD Board of Trustees, with James Goode, President, and Dr. Bobby Burns, Superintendent, presenting, it is our privilege to represent this plaque to Metrocrest Services, an organization that truly exemplifies a meaningful relationship between our community and our schools. Accepting the plaque is Tracy Eubanks, CFB Parent and CEO of Metrocrest Services, and if you'd like to introduce the other people with you, we would appreciate it.
Absolutely. I have with me Board Members Craig Woodville, he's the Chairman of the Board, Andy Coleman on the board as well, and employees on staff, Mike Harris, Nicole Newton, and Charlie Lindner.
James, can I say something? Mr. Goode. I'll just say it. I will, if you ever want a really good experience to make you know what the community is doing, go and volunteer and spend a couple hours there.
We have one more recognition tonight. We do this for students. It's why we exist, so it's kind of fitting tonight to have students here for you just a minute. But, you know, Blue Ribbon School is something that the federal government's started a long time, and we should recognize the very best. And so, we have two campuses here that we're going to honor tonight, but I want to just tell you how significant that is, because the United States is a pretty big place, right? We'd all agree. Pretty big place. Out of the whole U.S., 337 schools were selected. In Texas, 28, and only nine in the Dallas-Fort Worth area that we're on. Of all of the schools in Dallas-Fort Worth, it's a pretty big group. So we are indeed honored that we have two schools tonight that we're going to recognize, but at this time, we're going to have a very special performance. But at this time, we're going to have a very special performance from our McCoy Choir, who are also part of the fifth grade choir, who's a part of that Blue Ribbon Celebration. And we, we have lots of band people here, so I don't know if they're cute or anything. Are they coming? They ready to go? Okay. We're going to go back in. Come back.
Fifty-nifty, United States from thirteen original colonies. Fifty-nifty stars and the flag that billows so beautifully in the breeze. Each individual state contributes a quality that is great. Each individual state deserves a bow. We salute them now. Fifty-nifty, United States from thirteen original colonies. Shout 'em, shout 'em, tell all about 'em, one by one, till we give another day to every state in the USA. Alabama, Alaska, Arizona, Arkansas, California, Colorado, Connecticut, Delaware, Florida, Georgia, Hawaii, Idaho, Illinois, Indiana, Iowa, Kansas, Kentucky, Louisiana, Maine, Maryland, Massachusetts, Michigan, Minnesota, Mississippi, Missouri, Montana, Nebraska, Nevada, New Hampshire, New Jersey, New Mexico, New York, North Carolina, North Dakota, Ohio, Oklahoma, Oregon, Pennsylvania, Rhode Island, South Carolina, South Dakota, Tennessee, Texas, Utah, Vermont, Virginia, Washington, West Virginia, Wisconsin, Wyoming, Alabama, Alaska, Arizona, Arkansas, California, Colorado, Connecticut, Delaware, Florida, Georgia, Hawaii, Idaho, Illinois, Indiana, Iowa, Kansas, Kentucky, Louisiana, Maine, Maryland, Massachusetts, Michigan, Minnesota, Mississippi, Missouri, Montana, Nebraska, Nevada, New Hampshire, New Jersey, New Mexico, New York, North Carolina, North Dakota, Ohio, Oklahoma, Oregon, Pennsylvania, Rhode Island, South Carolina, South Dakota, Tennessee, Texas, Utah, Vermont, Virginia, Washington, West Virginia, Wisconsin, Wyoming, North, South, East, Western, Com, objective opinion. Texas is the best of the fifty-nifty, United States from thirteen original colonies. Shout 'em, shout 'em, tell all about 'em, one by one, till we give another day to every state in the good old U.S.A.
On behalf of McCoy Elementary, I'd like to thank you for allowing us to be here.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Now, if you're not an educator, and you weren't sure why, all the hard work, you saw it in tonight. That's why we do what we do. So we are so proud and honored to have McCoy here, but all of our students in our district work so hard every day for themselves, but also for this community. So we're very proud. And at this time, we'd like for the McCoy Elementary staff and the Early College High School staff that are here tonight to please come forward in the front so we can give them one more round of applause for this great recognition, and also take a picture.
Everybody together, and then we'll split and do one, two, and one. Okay, I think I've got everybody. I'll have one more. Okay, ready? One, two, three. Now let's do.
We don't want to move.
Okay, ready? One, two, three. Thank you.
It takes a while. Mr. Goode, members of the board, that does conclude our recognition tonight. We want to thank the parents for bringing the McCoy students tonight. It was a special treat for us, so thank you. It's a way to end our last meeting of 2014. Hard to believe, so.
Okay. Dr. Burns? Did that conclude your comments?
Yes, yes, sir.
Just want to make sure.
For 2014.
Okay. On behalf of the Board of Trustees, allow me a few comments. This is a wonderful opportunity that we, the board, always enjoy because we see the results of what we strive for throughout every activity function. You know, when, as, on the school board, we get into numbers and dollars, and we're far removed from the students, so it's such a pleasure to have an opportunity when we have educators and students to show what has been successfully accomplished in our school district. And it's such a pleasure also, when I think about the individual educators and their accomplishments in a classroom, that many times, I would dare say, I think the educators take it for granted because they believe that's what they're there for. But for us on the outside, it's such a wonderful opportunity to say thank you, because we get to see the end results. So to all of our educators, thank you very much for allowing us this opportunity this evening to say thank you to you. Let me add one other thing, being that it was mentioned that somebody, one of our educators, is part of the Carrollton Wind Symphony. If you're not aware, there will be a concert next Friday, I believe it's December nineteenth, seven-thirty PM, St. Andrews Methodist Church on Park Lane, Park Road in Plano. Plano Parkway? So, anybody that can come, we have many of our educators who participate in that symphony. So please come and acknowledge and say thank you to many of our staff. Pardon? That's another concert on the seventeenth? Okay, that's the second concert. Actually, that's the first concert. The second one will be on the nineteenth. That's right. Also, allow me to say thank you to Metrocrest Services. We fail sometimes to realize the true impact that they play in the lives of our students. You heard many numbers, statistics given on meals, but the end result is, I look at the educators, and what that hap, what happens is, Metrocrest Services provides a resource that benefits every one of our educators. That is, making those kids ready and focused on learning when they come into the classroom. So Metrocrest Services, we are indeed thankful to you for providing a resource that helps us in public education to make that learning process much easier, because those students are mentally prepared to walk into a classroom and learn. So Metrocrest Services, thank you all for what you do to our community. And, I'll say something about Blue Ribbon Schools, can't go, because that's, that's, that's special, when you have two schools, two campuses, as, in, which are representative of the unique qualities and characteristics of what we do in Carrollton Farmers Branch, and we contrast that with every school district in the entire United States. That is a true compliment to this school district, what is going on at the Early College High School and at McCoy Elementary. So, we have many things to be thankful for in public education, and it's very seldom that we can say thank you to such a, a group of individuals within and outside of the classroom, which makes our job on the Board of Trustees much easier, because we do not have to focus on the services that the educators and the community provides. So to all of you, thank you for being here. Thank you for allowing us to say, "A job well done." Now, I'm not going to just take a recess right now. We have a couple of presentations which I think you will enjoy, and so if you'll allow me, we're going to take a recess, but it's going to probably be fifteen, twenty minutes. And with that, we will go to Agenda Item Three, Report by Superintendent Dr. Burns.
Thank you, Mr. Goode. And members of the board, as you know, our focus is on student achievement, so how fitting for you to be here tonight to hear a little bit about what we're doing for student achievement. And we are continuing our series on how people learn. And tonight, we're going to talk about the mind and the brain, and how important it is for us to use the right strategies at the right time to make learning and achievement happen. So, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Warnock for tonight's presentation. Ms. Warnock.
Thank you, Dr. Burns. We believe that a learning organization is a symmetrical organization, and what we mean by symmetry in organization is that the adults in the organization have the same kind of learning that we want the children in the organization to be doing. So we have symmetry, so that everyone from the kindergarten student to our school board are participating in learning. This year, the board is reading from the National Research Council, How People Learn, and we are taking a chapter of that at each of our meetings to dig a little bit deeper into the science about how we learn. So tonight, we're going to be learning about how we learn through our mind and brain. Humans are natural meaning-making organisms. What the human brain does best is learn. Learning changes the structure of our brain by creating pathways and then strengthening those pathways when repeated.
As for every single one of us, learning something new means rearranging the way our brain works. Our brain has an astonishing hundred billion neurons, or brain cells, all connected together. Learning is about creating and strengthening pathways through these neurons for impulses of electricity. But between each and every connection in our brains, there's a tiny gap called a synapse. For any of us to learn something new, the electrical signal has to jump across this gap to continue its journey. The gap between the two brain cells is tiny, but that doesn't mean it's straightforward for a signal to get from one side to the other. For us, it's like crossing a deep ravine. And getting from one side to the other should tell us something about the way we learn. The first time a signal crosses from one brain cell to the other demands the most effort, and it's the same when we cross our ravine. The first trip across it is the hardest. Having crossed the ravine once, the journeys across get easier and easier. And a similar thing happens when we learn something. To start with, learning is difficult. But as the signal crosses the gap between the brain cells again and again, we establish a more solid pathway. By the time we've made the crossing over and over again, it becomes effortless. We can do it whenever we like. We've finally learned something.
So that's the work that our teachers do every day, is make connections across that ravine, and, you know, learning takes time, and it takes repetition over time. We know that writing helps our brain develop logical function required for successful content learning, that writing can help our brain to recognize, construct, and extend patterns, that writing can clarify sequential processes. We know that- We know that writing floats on a sea of talk, and that writing acts as memory cement. So we're going to take a look at how the bridge is built with writing and how we use writing to build the bridge. We're going to join a kindergarten classroom. In our elementary writing, students in grades K through 5 participate in writer's workshop. The workshop follows a predictable structure, again, building that bridge in our students' brains. The teacher teaches a mini lesson. It's a direct teach. The teacher models and demonstrates how to draft, revise, or edit a piece of writing. Students are then dismissed from the mini lesson to practice what they've learned or to transfer. So we're in acquisition, we make meaning, and then students transfer into their own writing. Students gather together to share a piece of writing or a portion of their writing, either with a large group or with a partner. So we'll take a look at one of our kindergarten rooms. In this unit, students are participating, called Writing for Readers. Students are learning how to revise and edit their writing so that it's easy for a reader to read it. And the teacher teaches students to spell high-frequency words correctly, to put spaces between their words, and to write of all of the sounds they can hear in words that they're not sure how to spell. So we'll watch as the beginning bridge is laid. So writers, it's time for us to start our writer's workshop. Our learning target today is I can make my writing easy to read. We've been talking about this this week. The five things that make our writing easy to read, and that's what we're going to practice doing today. And let's look at the first thing we can do. The first thing writers can do is writers can stretch words. The second thing writers can do, uppercase letter at the beginning of the sentence. Number three, writers can use spaces. Number four, writers use punctuation marks. And the last thing writers can do is writers can use word wall for side words. Oh, I see a useless thinking. Why is it important that writers make their writing easy to read? Remember saying, it's important to make our writing easy to read because...
It's important to make our writing easy to read because if we don't, other people can't read it.
That is so smart. If we don't make it easy to read, other people can't read our writing. Oh, boys and girls, I see my friend Priscilla, she is going back and rereading her writing. It is so important that we reread our writing to make sure it makes sense. Okay, so this is Cole's writing. It says, "Last Saturday, I went to the Brawmas game, and then they won 3 to 1." So I can see here is the hockey game. Here's the people, Brawmas is the hockey team. Here's the ice rink. So we see that beginning foundation, students using spaceman to understand where to space between words, high-frequency words in the beginning of story, concept, and writing. Next, we're going to take a look in a second grade classroom where students were writing fairy tale adaptations. They take a familiar fairy tale and change it in some way. Typically, students change the evil character, which then changes other characters as well as the setting. The teacher is teaching students about mantras or repeated words and phrases characteristic in traditional literature. She models how she came up with her own mantra and invites students to make up mantras that fit with their own fairy tale adaptations. We'll see group instruction. And then if you were stepping into the classroom, you would see students working independently while a teacher confers with individuals, helping them apply the mini lesson and work on other issues in their writing. It says mantra and often repeated word or phrase.
I'm going to take this with like the, um, the, um, the three little pigs. Um, whatever they say, no, not by the hair, my chinny chin chin.
Ah, so the pigs also have a mantra. Now, everybody has this sheet. Do you see how this is going to help you when you start your new packet?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so on the top, what do you think goes across the top?
The tie.
So just like in our small moment unit, we're going to plan our pages first. So that way, if we stop in the middle of a page, we can pick it back up and still know what that page is going to be about. How do you think we start, Landon? Okay, so on the top, I'm just going to write, "Once upon time." If I follow my sheet, I can see that next to my plan is Main Event Number One. Also, remember, we talked about having a mantra. On the next page, what am I going to plan, Shreya? Turkey Two, Bill's House. What's the next one I'm going to plan, John Walter?
Turkey number three, Bill's House.
Right, so what comes next after number three? What do we have, Winfrey? We have our solution page, which we also know is the ending of our story. Now, the very last page is called About the Author. Now, next week, everybody's going to bring a picture of themselves. We're going to put it on your About the Author page, and then you're going to tell me about yourself, just like they do in some of the real books that we read. Your goal for today, first, you're going to write your mantra. Everybody has sticky notes at their table. You're going to write it on a sticky note, so that way you can have it stuck right on your packet like mine. So I would like table captains to grab your packets and your tables holders. Everybody else go to your page. So we see from this illustration, the child's writing becoming more complex, and the language that they understand about writing deepening is, again, that bridge is crossed over and over. Next, we're moving into middle school, and we're going to see that in middle school, our learning target is that students will understand how to identify in a positive and rename a noun in writing, reading an essay, discussing how nouns are renamed, and write in a positive in my kernel essay. This particular student's used a structure to begin her essay, and the teacher will show students how to elaborate on each of their reasons.
I want hers also with a positive because it's describing, um, it's renaming, um, a noun, and it's also describing to kind of help create a mental picture.
I would like for you right now to write a sentence like our mentor's sentence with an apposite in it at the end. But it doesn't have to be about the same thing. Could be. Now, we turn to your kernel essay homework from last night. So your kernel essay, with the text structures that we did. I would like for you to take your kernel essay, find someone, make eye contact, ask him or her if you may read your kernel essay.
My phone is something I wouldn't sell because you can talk to people, call people, and play games. My phone can contact my parents just in case of an emergency. I can text my friends to make plans for something. My phone can download games so I won't get bored. I love my phone because I can do a lot of things with it.
More things to do to meet our learning target. If you all would return to your mentor essay from yesterday, the Barbie essay. In your groups, I would like for you to find right now all the ways, all the nouns that are used to rename Barbie. What other nicknames for Barbie? Excellent, my little plastic princess. Sorry, Nicholas, go ahead.
I love, second paragraph, last sentence, I love my cross-eyed plastic figure.
Excellent, I love my cross-eyed plastic figure.
Without the alternative names, uh, it, um, with them, it kind of goes into ordeff. Uh, it helps the reader create a mental picture of how Barbie looks rather than just saying Barbie is beautiful.
So we see as we move into high school, the idea of the kernel essay elaborated even further. The teacher at the high school shows students how to take a kernel idea or a small idea and then determine different genres in which to write about the idea, going from a fictional narrative to a literary to expository to persuasive. And this technique is called an elastic kernel. So we see that bridge being laid even stronger as we move into high school with repeated exposure to these ideas and concepts.
And coming up with, and let me back up. You're going to be brainstorming about different topics you can use based off of something that comes from you. That, that's it.
So for my event, I said that people, they think that I'm all just about school and nothing else, just because I'm Indian, and they just like assume that I make straight A's and just like not hang out with friends or anything. And I put, people have a specific view about me because of my race. And I'm curious because why are people are treated differently because just of their race? And for persuasive, I put that they shouldn't judge just based on your race.
Okay. For my narrative, I put, when I was in high school and started Powerlifting, I lost a lot of weight. For, um, literary story, an overweight middle schooler aboard bully for his size and try, and trying to change himself. For expository, I put, why are kids overweight? How far does spoiling a child goes? And for persuasive, I put, kids need to become healthier, and fast food places should add a healthy choice.
So we see from the beginning, learning to put spaces between words, learning basics site to the foundation where we're able to take an idea and then pull it and stretch it to be an expository, a literary, a persuasive piece of writing, that that student's growth occurs over time by really systematic teaching, planning, and repetition of concepts, and also using writing to learn. Plato said, "The mind is like a tablet of wax on which impressions are made. Rehearsing experiences or information strengthens or deepens the impressions, resulting in information that is more easily remembered." And that is how we learn.
Mr. Good, that concludes our presentation. Thank you. Quickly, board members, any questions at this time? Hearing none, seeing none. Board members, what we will do at this time, before we go on to Agenda Item 3B, Construction Report and Update, we are going to take a 10-minute recess, and the time is 8:01, and we will return at 8:11 PM. This meeting is reconvened at 8:11 PM. And we, our next item is Agenda Item 3B. However, before we go to that, for the audience, I'd like to remind you that coming up after that will be the Consent Agenda, and there will be an opportunity for Audience for Guest. Audience for Guest is a mechanism that the board uses to collect information from our constituents who would like to speak to the board. And if you would like to speak to the board, you will be allocated three minutes. And if you would, please fill out the form that's outside the double doors, and then give that to Ms. Smith. With that being said, we're going to go on to Agenda Item 3B, Construction Report and Update. Dr. Burns?
Yes, Mr. Good, members of the board, as you know, it's been since 2003 that we passed a bond for capital improvement. But we've been using that bond money to do a lot of construction, a lot of things the past 11 years. And so we're beginning to come to a close with a lot of that bond money. But also, in general, we obviously do a lot of construction work during the summer. So tonight, Mr. Hyatt and Mr. Riz have prepared a kind of an update, I think, and a report on where we are and all of that. And so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Hyatt.
This is a very brief report, but sometimes we take for granted that everybody knows everything we're doing because we're so involved in the day-to-day operations, and it's progressive work that we do. Uh, so, but we thought we'd just take a chance here right near the Christmas holidays to update the board on where we are with some of our construction projects, things that are recently completed, and things we're going to be doing in the next few months. It's brief, but it just lets you have an opportunity to catch up with where we are and an opportunity to put out for the public a, a brief report on things that we're trying to accomplish. So at this time, turn it over to Johnny Hibbs, our Executive Director of Facilities, and Mr. Tom Bell, who is a Registered Architect and our District Construction Manager. Mr. Hibbs.
Dr. Burns, Mr. Good, board members, we're going to be brief. We're going to show, uh, just a few quick slides right here, right quick to, uh, I'm going to give a little bit of history, kind of how we've gotten to where we are. And then, uh, Mr. Bell will stand in here in a minute and kind of give a more of a, a fine tuning of our, of our construction program. Uh, Dr. Burns always likes for us to start with a quote, so we're going to try to be simple today. Uh, little known fact, Albert actually wrote this before he was asked to, asked to explain school finance. So that was really where the origin of that quote came from. Uh, where we are, we've got 54 buildings. Uh, we've got a little over 5 million square feet of building. Uh, we, in the past 11 years, 22 buildings have been constructed or have had a significant renovation, seven of which have been totally replaced. I did a calculation on our average age of building a couple of years ago. Our average age of building just applies about 15 years. So we're really pretty current with our, with our boarding, with our, our buildings. And we're in the year 11 of our 2003 Capital Bond Campaign. You remember, we originally thought that campaign would last about five or six years. So we've done pretty good stretching our, our dollars and, uh, and stretching our, our bond program. Capacity-wise, currently, the district is utilizing six portable classrooms. Uh, that's down from 104 classrooms, which were being utilized when we originated our bond program in 2003. Our district is pretty much flat as far as our growth is right now. And, uh, our square foot per student is just over 200. The region 10 median is just over 165. I'll turn it over to Tom right now, let him talk to us about what we're doing and where we're going.
Los Colinas Replacement School opened this year. That's an aerial view of it. If I can find my cursor. Here we go. That's the front entry right there, front door. The old driveway stayed the same, and it's right over here. We now have a long stacking line to drop off and pick up students. Polk Middle School, we just finished an addition at Polk, and we added 10 classrooms. Freeman Elementary, we just finished an addition there, and we added nine classrooms. The Ranch View Expansion, Ranch View Expansion is going on right now. This is an aerial view of the whole campus. Right here is the front, the circular drive. The front door is right in here. Down the circular drive will be the auditorium. The auditorium is right in this area right here. They are currently drilling piers on all the sites. This is the new weight room for the athletic department. Again, they're drilling piers. Over here, across from the baseball field, is the new indoor practice facility. Laid out kind of like Creekview High School's is. Over here are new tennis courts. And up here by the pond, here's the pond. This is the new academic wing right here. This is a rendering of the auditorium at Ranch View. La Vita Elementary Expansion. Even though La Vita seems like a new school, we're already adding on to it. We're going to add nine classrooms to La Vita. Bush Middle School, we're going to add on to Bush approximately 10 classrooms. 2015 Summer Project for this summer is Kent Elementary is going to get all new HVAC rooftop air conditioning units. McCamey is the same. Carrollton Elementary is going to get a new roof and all new rooftop air conditioning units. This is a picture of La Vita, showing where the nine classrooms go. They will go at the end of each pod wing. There's a picture of Bush Middle School. It's hard to find the cursor here. There's the front entry, and our addition is at the back here. There's our addition to Bush Middle School. On the deck, not even on the drawings yet, is Davis Elementary and Landry for additions to those two schools.
Will we have to entertain any questions? But right quick, I just want you guys to realize how... But right quick, I just want you guys to realize how fortunate we ought to have Tom Bell. There's a reason why our capital bond campaign has gone as well as it has, and a big part of it is standing right here next to me. So kind of a man behind the curtain, kind of the guy that kind of is, his efforts are seen a lot more than he is. But we are very fortunate to have him, and he's done a lot of good work for us over the years.
Board members, questions? Randy. Johnny, you mentioned that attendance and growth is basically flat. These are new classrooms. What's the theory? Are we expanding the size or are we replacing? What all is?
We're, though our growth across the district is flat, we have seen some modest growth in the La Vita area. So by capturing those, some extra space at La Vita, utilizing some TIF funds that we have available for us, we can accommodate the little bit of growth, the little spike that we have in the district in that area. And that should serve that area for elementary schools for a significant length of time.
Great, thank you.
Sure. Franklin.
Johnny, TIF funds are different than our general operating budget, aren't they?
That is correct. That's a unique funding mechanism that we enjoy there in the Irving area. It doesn't take from our general operating budget or our capital fund program. And we appreciate the efforts that you guys have demonstrated to us, even recently, which has leveraged some of those funds that can, that has helped us quite a bit as far as prolonging the life of our capital bond campaign.
What I just heard you say is that TIF funds are mandated to be used only for specific purposes in certain geographical areas.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Board members?
I'm curious, what is, do you know the seating capacity of the new auditorium at Ranch View?
It's approximately six hundred seats.
Okay. Other questions? If not?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Ms. Smith, do we have any Audience for Guest? Before I go into elaborate detail regarding Audience for Guest, I'd rather see if there's anybody who wishes to speak. Being that there are none?
We have one. We have one.
We do have one, very good. With that, I'll clarify a little more about Audience for Guest. Audience for Guest is a mechanism we use to listen to feedback from our audience. However, it's also something typically we cannot discuss or respond to unless, of course, that is part of an agenda item. You will be given three minutes to present. Come to the microphone, introduce yourself, where you live. And our timekeeper, Mr. Shore, will let you know when your three minutes is up. I have one Audience for Guest, Mr. Bobby Woody. Please come forward. Okay. If I may?
Yes.
This, does this refer to an item that we have on the agenda?
I believe so.
Would you like to wait until that item on the agenda comes up and speak at that time?
Sure, that'd be great.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
I'll call you up at the appropriate time. Being that there are no other Audience for Guest, we're going to move on to Agenda Item 4B, which is our Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda is just a mechanism we use to approve a number of routine items together on a single vote, which is in compliance with our Texas Open Meetings Act. Prior to any action though being taken on the Consent Agenda, board members may request withdrawal of an individual item for clarification or discussion. Board members, are there any items you would like to remove from the Consent Agenda at this time? Mr. Shore.
I'd like to remove B six.
Item B six, very good. Board members, any other items? Hearing none? Do I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda with the exception of item six?
Mr. Goode, I would move that we approve the Consent Agenda with the removal of item six.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. That is unanimous, thank you very much. Now we will go back to Consent Agenda Item Six, which is Consider All Matters Related to Option Exchange Agreement pertaining to the parcels of property located with the Farmers Branch Tax Increment Finance Zone Number One. Mr. Shore.
Mr. Goode, it is my understanding that later on in this meeting, we may go into closed session to discuss matters regarding real estate. And even though this may be a no-brainer, I think that this is something that we should discuss. And since we're allowed by law to do it in closed session, I don't think that we should forfeit that opportunity. And that's why I've asked that it be pulled and not acted on merely in a consent agenda.
Very good. We will come back to this item when we get close to the end of the agenda, which would be Agenda Item Seven. With that being said, we will therefore move on to Agenda Item 4C, Report of Continuing Education Credit Earned by Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD Board Members. Dr. Burns, would you like to speak on that, or should I?
Well, I'll be glad to comment and let you do the official one, but I'll just say, I want to say for the record that this board, as in previous boards, but this board particularly, has been committed to meeting not only their minimum requirements, but exceeding the requirements in training and learning to continue to be an effective school board trustee. So I'm honored to serve with you guys because when we go places, people know that CFP is the leader of school board trustee learning, and we're proud of that. We may not get our honor this year of highest attendance at the North Texas thing, but we come back with vengeance when we lose the title, so the next year after.
Very good. In compliance with the Texas Education Code Section eleven point one five nine B, I am happy to report that each of the CFP ISD trustees has met and exceeded the training required to be completed as of the date of this meeting and to direct at the minutes of tonight's meeting states that. Yes, sir.
Before we go to the next item, I'd like to expand upon what Dr. Burns said.
Yes, sir.
Because not everyone in the audience may understand the gravity of it. The past two years, CFP has won the award, given out by the North Texas Area Association of School Boards, for the most attendees at the continuing education seminars put on by the North Texas Area Association of School Boards. These are generally on a Wednesday night, six thirty to eight thirty, anywhere in the North Texas area. And it requires each of these other seven people to probably leave work a little bit early, leave their loved ones a little bit early, and go to learn more. It's been a privilege to be part of this group that has won that award the past two years. I regret to say that because of an injury, not an injury, an illness. One of us hasn't been able to participate as much as we wanted to. And other school districts are probably thrilled that that occurred, but we're going to get them next year.
Absolutely.
Very good.
Well, and their first meeting was during one of our board meetings.
Not that we feel like there's a conspiracy against us, but they did have it on a Thursday night, and we were having a board meeting.
There's scheduling involved in football, and there's scheduling involved in board meetings.
Any other comments? Board members, I do have a record of the hours, if anybody's interested, for the Tier Two and Tier Three training. However, they do exceed the requirements as dictated by the state. If there are any other questions? Seeing none, we're going to move on to Agenda Item 4D, is Review and Consider Possible Revisions to the Board of Trustees Standards of Professional Practice. Ms. Klein.
We had a subcommittee appointed, and it was Ms. Watt and Mr. Shackman and myself. And we met, and we went through the standards of professional practice. And I neglected to send my subcommittee my summary. I will forward that to them. But I sent it to Mr. Goode and recommended that there were some possible team of eight items. Things we discussed, like, do we need a parliamentarian? Do we, you know, one of the, we also found things in the SOPP about items we maybe should be doing, like representatives to different committees that we asked Mr. Goode to consider. But in general, we mainly just wanted to talk about some of the things that we had found as a board and submitted that to you.
Very good. Regarding that, there will be no action taken this evening. However, Dr. Burns, what we would like to do as a board is to make this one of our work-study session items for next year. So we can go into that SOPP in detail and make sure that we bring it, shall I say, up to date. It's a number of years old now. And so Ms. Klein did come up with her committee a number of items. But we can do a thorough discussion among ourselves as a team of eight, what we believe additional information may be needed or information to maybe be deleted. So, Dr. Burns?
I have it on my list.
Okay, very good. Being that we will take no action, we will move on to Agenda Item 4E, which is Discuss and Consider All Matters Related to Inter-District Transfers Policy FDB Local. And at this time, Mr. Woody, if you would like to speak, we are ready to move forward with Agenda Item 4E, which I believe you would like to speak regarding.
We ready?
Yes, sir. Everybody ready?
Great. Well, my student, my son attends RL Turner. He was denied eligibility to swim varsity. He came from Perry Middle School. The issue I have is pretty much, I've reached out to multiple people, and I'm being told that it's a inter-district transfer. He's never attended another high school. He's never been in another program. I reached out to the UIL in Austin, and they said that if a school district, let me get the right wording here that they gave me, has developed a choice option for specialized academic curriculums or programs, then the parameters of Section four forty B, number four, the student could apply and make their choice at the first opportunity. On the Metza Academy application, it specifically states that it is the academy of choice. I don't really know where to go with this. I've gone with a lot of, talked to a lot of people, and I don't understand why my son is denied varsity inclusion for inter-district transfer when he's never been in another school.
Very good. Anything further?
I guess not. The UIL in Austin stated that it's a local decision by the UIL. They recognize the academies as a specialized program. And my question to the school board is, why is it not recognized here?
Very good, thank you. We are going to have some additional discussion regarding this policy. Mr. Shackman, I believe you had requested that this be placed on our agenda, and with that, if you would?
Thank you. To all the board members, I did ask that this get placed on the agenda. It came to my attention, same time it came, I think, to all of you. And I think the Woodies are the folks that sent a letter to us on the board. Since that time, I've taken a pretty exhaustive look at the FDB Local policy, and I am of the opinion that this policy no longer reflects our current district practice. And I'd like to show you what I think we need to do about it. There are really, I think, three main concerns. First of all, you'll notice I prepared a slide. That's the center section of FDB Local, where it talks about regular transfer. And if you read that, first thing you notice is there is no mention of academies. There's no mention of special or optional programs. None of that appears. It doesn't even define regular transfers. I called folks at Tasby in Austin, and they believe that this policy was first crafted in the late nineteen nineties. And bottom line, it's a twentieth-century policy trying to serve us in a twenty-first-century school. When it talks about regular transfers, while it doesn't say what it is, there are three things that happen up there that are significant and I think shed light on this. It says, first of all, if a student desires to transfer, this policy approaches this subject as if it's a student-initiated action. What we're doing with our academies, what we're doing with IB World School, early college high school, we recruit for these programs. We go out and market them, and we invite students to come. So there is, yes, the student and the family makes a decision eventually to apply, but we are providing options, and we are reaching out and encouraging them. And it also says in the policy, "to another school." That's interesting. In contract law, you'd argue and say, it doesn't say academies, and they aren't applying to another school. They're applying to an academy. Six to one half dozen the other a little bit. But the bottom line of this policy is very big. It doesn't mention what we are presently doing. And it also says up there that they will petition in writing the superintendent to request a transfer. That's not happening in our district. Our policy doesn't require it. Now perhaps we think that a Metza Academy application or an ECH application or something is a petition. Can you punch up the second slide for me? There's the, this is the Metza application. And notice that there is no mention anywhere of transferring, but rather it does say it is an academy of choice. It also says, and if I'm signing this as a parent, it says that I'm going to be responsible as a student to the RL Turner Student Handbook. So why would I not think I'm a regular bona fide RL Turner student? The next slide, please. This is the ECHS application. It's four pages long. It doesn't say a word about transfer, nowhere in the application. And in fact, if you read the Interested in Applying webpage, and there's the source of the webpage from our district website, it actually, the only time that it comes up, it says, "if you're transferring from an outside district, another ECHS high school into our ECHS high school." Bottom line is, none of our academies, none of our extra optional programs are dealing with this in the process of a transfer. And I think that it's significant that we have long expressed our desire and interest as a board and encouraged our district to be innovators in learning. We believe in academies. We believe in the quality of our programs. And yet this policy isn't supporting that kind of process. A second thing that comes up in all of this, if you cycle the slide again, this is what UIL says. Mr. Woody referred to this. But notice their rules, not ours, their rules. You are eligible, point-blank, without equivocation, if a district has option to attend more than one high school. We do. You can opt to attend ECHFs if you apply. You can opt to attend one of the academies. What about Biomed? What about here? What about there? We have a lot of, and I'm glad we have a lot of options. But we need to get our policy up to speed so that it reflects the fact that we have these kind of options. It is significant that these options are available. This can create another challenge for us, the next slide. The same standard that UIL uses in athletics, they also apply in music and academics. Because the baseline standard is always, did the student change to this school for the purpose of that athletic or music or academic program? If the answer is no, they're eligible. That's UIL. And if we're going to apply this standard in athletics, and we aren't applying it in music or others, other programs, academics, I'm afraid we're not treating students fairly and equally across the board. So that, I think, is a significant concern. And I struggle with the fact that why are we creating barriers where UIL doesn't and where we are reaching out and trying to effectively bring kids into our academies? Third and final thing that is of note to me in all of this is I believe this really revolves around our customer service issue. We all believe in our academies. We believe in ECHS and world, IB World School. We think they're superb. We want kids in them. My sons have been in the Metza Academy. Why would we have outdated, archaic policies that are creating bureaucracy and restrictive measures that could in fact discourage students from attending an academy? measures that could in fact discourage students from attending an academy? We need to update this policy and it is time to recognize that as a district, we have de facto open campus borders for our academies, but our policy doesn't state that. And so, that's where we've run into this problem. I'd like to suggest that, you know, we've poured thousands of dollars and hundreds of hours into customer service and into improving customer service. And our fourth supporting objective, we all know, continually, continuing to improve community support. And then we came up to an example like this and we ran into this swim problem situation and frankly, it appears to me that the administration dug in their heels and said, "we aren't going to change, we're not going to solve this and frankly, we're going to support a policy that is nothing but bureaucracy and outdated." And I, I'm kind of disappointed in that, but I want us to get past that. I want us to go on and update our policies so that they reflect what we really need to do. You want to cycle one more slide there for me? It's an easy fix, folks. This is my recommendation to us, that we would insert this language between the regular transfers paragraph and the change of residence paragraph in our FDB policy. It would simply then read, "in an attempt to maximize the optimal learning environment for all students, the district offers optional academies and special high school programs at various locations throughout the district. When a student who resides within the boundary, district boundaries, is accepted into a high school academy or special high school program at the beginning of their ninth grade year or upon the first opportunity in the district, they will not be required to reside in a specific attendance zone. Students accepted into academies or special high school programs at the beginning of ninth grade or at their first opportunity to attend high school in the district shall attend without having to transfer or be subject to requirements or limitation defined in or created by this policy." And then to make sure we're in compliance with UIL and I think good practice, I would include, if a student who is attending an academy or special school program chooses to leave the academy or program to attend a regular high school or a different academy or other school program, then they shall be subject to district transfer requirements. It's as simple as that. It brings us up to date. It would reflect what we do. We are an open campus border for practice. We let kids come. We invite them to come. We want them to come. Kids in our academies tend to outscore and do better than everywhere else. I just believe we as a board need to say, hey, what we have in our book now, dealt with bricks and mortar back when. The future of education is borderless. Online schooling, all sorts of other things. In a Tasby seminar this last summer, they said, "superintendents of the future will probably be superintendents of districts that don't have buildings." Now, that's probably a long way off, but the bottom line is, that's where education is going. And as innovators in learning, I think that's where we need to be going. We need to be proactively supporting our academies in a positive way, supporting students. And I'd like to recommend that we move this direction with updating and making this little amendment in our policy.
Thank you. Dr. Burns?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Shackman and members of the board. You know, and I think Mr. Shackman is exactly right, you know, that this is, this is board work policy. We follow policy. We implement the policy and interpret the policy. And we are changing. It's a continually different school district than it was many, many years ago. And so, it's always good to kind of revisit your policies and see if they are doing what they were intended to do and if they need to be changed. That's what the board does, is they change those policies and then we implement the right procedures to, to follow those policies. You know, as in anything with transfer, there are some complications. So, if, if we're willing to deal with some of those with it, it is a board, you know, decision that, you know, when you create kind of this openness, you do, you may have fostering some recruitment for athletic purposes. So, we just need to be prepared to deal with that.
I do hope that we get to the point-
Absolutely.
-where Allen and South Lake Carroll's kids are trying to sneak into our athletic programs through Metza.
Yeah. 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 So, it's really, it is a board decision, you know, we, we had a transfer policy and if you feel like amending it and bringing it up to speed is appropriate and, and you're comfortable with taking academies and making them first choices, and then we will respond That's kind of just the summary of it. Ms. Warnock, you probably deal with it more, obviously being a former high school principal as well as over our, all of our educational services. So, I don't know if your staff has some additional comments or not.
No, we would, you know, again, just that, that is the, the board's direction, what the board would choose to do. From talking with our current sitting high school principals and our athletic director, just for your consideration to think about, that that policy was put in place, my understanding is that the outset of academies because of wanting to retain the integrity of the transfer for academic purposes. So, really making certain that there wasn't athletic recruiting happening between schools. That was one purpose. The second piece, just to think about, that if a student, if we were in a first choice situation and then a student, let's say, attended the Metza Academy at Turner for a year and then decided they wanted to return to their home campus, then they would set out an eligibility on the return home for a year. So, the UIL has the attendance piece in place only for athletics. It's not for academics or arts, the attendance residence requirements.
Mr. Shore?
Ladies before gentlemen.
Okay.
That's not necessarily calling a gentleman, but-
Okay.
Mine are simple. They don't require a lot of thinking. First of all, can I see the UIL wording? I think he stepped away from the screen. But the UIL wording where, at the very top, it said something about, yeah, the note, "a student who has changed schools for athletic purposes may be..." How do you determine that?
It's a factual inquiry. Where actually the administrators in the district get together and determine whether the student-
You can tell?
Well, they make decisions.
Okay.
There is a form. I would say the thing is that-
But there's a process and a form?
There's a process and, you know, what we know about the dynamics of all of this is if you're a coach and there's an athlete in your attendance zone and now he's choosing to go to academy in another attendance zone, that's probably going to raise your eyebrows just a little bit and say, you know, is that really why you're going? So, it happens a lot with coaches questioning whether or not you're going for that academy reason or because you've been promised maybe something else. And so, you know, now, we like to believe that our coaches don't do that and, and we don't encourage that at all. And we do have open rounds and lots of school districts have something similar. At the same time, coaches try to build this feeder system spirit and, and you go to the elementary, you go to the middle school that feeds that high school. And so, that's, that's kind of the, the building ground for them. And so, when they lose athletes to that, as we can understand, they're a little upset. But it comes from other coaches questioning whether or not you chose to do that for, for that reason.
Okay, I have two more short questions and they'll be shorter than the answer.
We'll make the answers quick and short, too.
Early college high school, when we started early college high school, my understanding was anybody that went to it was understanding they weren't going to be participating. So, is it your expectation that early college high school is part of this?
Only from the standpoint that kids who live, you know, we don't even have boundaries for early college high school.
Right.
And so-
I don't think we have, do we have UIL for early college high school?
No, they're not participating athletics. That, that's a choice.
Okay.
That is really truly a choice of a, a school to go to for academic purposes-
It's a choice between athletics.
Because there is no other purpose.
Right.
Okay.
That is the purpose.
So, that was, I was a little confused there because you referenced that. And then I have a second. Can we go back to his last slide, please, sir? You keep referencing a special high school program. You say academies and special high school programs. I'm curious as to what a special high school program is. Is it, you know, number sense? I'm kidding.
No, it might be, we have programs, I, you know, yeah.
Okay.
There may be programs where we designate. I'm not sure that we call all of our, you know, culinary arts as an academy. You know, I'm not sure that we call all of our special programs with the term academy. So, I was trying to be inclusive with language.
And I think it sounds really broad, is my worry. I'm curious what it encompasses. So, I would appreciate a more specific label that helps, I don't know, or I'm curious if anybody think it, thinks it matters. I'm just didn't understand what it was covering.
And Ms. Klein, you, you make a, a good point in that if we, if each of the high schools have academies, then it makes it kind of confusing. So, if you live in Creekview, but you want to go to that academy and you're an athlete and you live in Turner, I mean, so typically when you see this, it's one school having the academy that the other schools may not. And they're going there for that reason. Not that we can't do it this way, just means that that-
But in fact-
-they kind of complicate the situation that they'll have one.
We do have schools that have, one school, Metza is not, in any other high school. It is only at RL Turner.
Oh, there's a engineering program.
There is an engineering, but it is not Metza. You know, culinary arts is only at Newman Smith. So, those academies are in specific locations and if you are, if you happen to live over in Irving, Las Colinas and you're not in the Metza Academy zone and you choose to go to Metza and you end up valedictorian of the class, did, did Eric L. Bruce, you know, apply as a transfer? We're still close to their family. She said she didn't. Her family said she didn't. Bottom line is, we don't ask people to transfer. And I just think that we need to update our policy to say, in the area of academies or our special programs, whatever term, and this is language for us to look at. I'm not saying that we shouldn't wordsmith some of this.
Yeah.
Okay? But my thought process is, we want to make sure that we are doing everything to encourage participation in academies, in these special programs, not creating any bureaucracy or roadblocks and to find a way to adapt our policy to, I think, more effectively reflect what A, we're doing and B, what UIL would encourage us to do, which is to say, if you provide options, then that ninth grade year, first time in or first time into the district, that's yours campus of choice.
Mr. Shore?
We're an open session, so I want to be cautious about speaking about any particular student. And I'm not prepared to disagree with Mr. Shackman that perhaps we need to address our policy, but I want to see if we can do some triage here. So, let's assume that student X lives in the Ranchview Attendance Zone, but wants to go to Turner as a ninth grader from Metza. What is the policy that is precluding that student from participating in UIL athletics?
An FDB Local and the current rendering, it states that, "A student shall be permitted to participate in UIL activities in accordance with UIL rules and regulations. A student who transfers is ineligible to participate in varsity athletics for one year from the date of enrollment in the new school." Procedurally, we've treated the academy as a transfer.
Tell me why we do that because that's not a transfer.
That they're attending a school outside of their regular attendance zone.
Tell me why, tell me why that's a transfer because it isn't.
They're, they're choosing a, a school outside of their regular zone, so they're-
I don't disagree with that statement.
Right.
But that's not a transfer. A transfer would be, I started at school X and now I'm moving to school Y, where those schools are at a comparable level. In other words, when we, when we leave the middle school, okay, there's going to be a movement to a high school. But generally, we don't consider a student going from middle school to high school as a transfer. We can say that is progression.
A good thing.
Yeah. And, and so, this is just me speaking now, okay? I'm hard pressed to see how, how it could be cogently contended that a student who is anywhere geographically in the district graduates from eighth grade, elects to go to one of the four high schools for whatever, I say for whatever reason, okay? For whatever reason. I don't know how you could cogently argue that that's a transfer. It is merely, I, I am going to the next school because I'm eligible to do that. And from reading what UIL says, okay, and I'm, you know, I'd be shocked if Randy put something up there that isn't the way it is. UIL doesn't consider that a transfer, or at least, they don't consider that as a reason to preclude the student from participating in whatever extracurricular program it is, okay? And whatever this is worth, I think we're reading those words, and I don't remember what they are, but, but they've been interpreted by some as meaning a transfer. And I'm going to tell you something, that's reading that left is right.
Mr. Shore, if I could shed some light on it, which may be hard because, you know, I haven't been doing this a long time, is that, you know, school districts have a choice when you have multiple high schools of whether or not you want to be attendance zones or do you want to have open choice? Garland is an example that has open choice. But what they do establish is that, you know, we've got to know where they're going in that high school, okay? Because, so we got a plan for how many are coming.
You, you are too current with vehicles not to understand what I'm about to say, okay? We have a hybrid.
You're exactly right.
We have, we have a hybrid.
We have a hybrid. And so, we need a little bit of both because we believe that there's some value in having an established attendance zone of where you would go to elementary, middle and high school, okay? Because if not, we couldn't control-
Subject to, subject to, there's a special program at a, at a facility that's not in your attendance zone, you are eligible by being in the district to go to that.
To apply and be accepted.
And if you go at ninth grade, I could say a bad word here. How the heck can that be considered a transfer?
Correct me if I'm wrong. In any of the academies, the Law Academy at Creekview, for example, Metza, any of them, you have to apply, number one. You can't just go because you want to.
That's correct.
You, you have to apply and be accepted in that academy. So, therefore, I mean, you take a kid in the eighth grade, his daddy is an attorney, his mom is an attorney, his granddad-
Poor kid.
You know, bless their hearts. But he wants to be an attorney. But he lives in RL Turner District. But Creekview's got the Law Academy. I don't see how it could be a transfer if that's what he, if he applies and then the academy says, yes, you met the qua, and you can't just, I mean, not just anybody can get in any academy they want to. You have to meet certain criteria and then have certain, you know, academic standards and so forth. So, if you're accepted into that academy, then you're a student at that school, I think all bets are off. You can do whatever you want to at that high school, I would think. That would make sense.
Are you saying as a ninth grader?
As a ninth grader, yes.
You're going to have to establish a year of, of eligibility.
Right.
That ninth grade year is typically the year that you do that. And really, I mean, it's, it's the board's policy, it's the district's kind of, of way that we believe is the best to help administer our programs and give our kids the most opportunities. And, you know, we can, you know-
Is this an action item?
Well, it's an action item, but you'd have to waive second reading if you wanted to adopt a reading or others, bring it back for a reading.
I'd like some wordsmithing.
Well, I'd like to, I don't disagree with that, but, but here, if you can go with this, okay?
Ah.
Here's a, here's like a, an off-the-cuff motion, okay? I move that the district stop interpreting the phrase "wrong."
Can I clarify that, that you, that we'd like for the district to not, to consider students who apply for academy not to be transfer students?
That's correct.
And this may make me change. Can I go?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, do, does a culinary school recruit outside the Newman Smith boundaries?
Yeah.
When we have kind of eighth grade career nights, CTE fairs, all of the special programs, auto mechanics, cosmetology, the culinary pathway, all of those programs are, you know, highlighted as options for students.
And then my last question is, does the IB program at Ranchview, I sort of understood it was difficult to do UIL and do that, but are there kids doing both athletics and that at Ranchview? So, that would be one that would still fit. So, okay, I, and I understand Mr. Shore's recommendation. I just am still confused by high school special programs, but also understand there's-
I'm with you. I'm with you on that.
But I understand what you're saying and I, I think- But I understand what you're saying, and I, I think that, you know, it's interesting.
I know how this all got started way, way, way back. And Mrs. Warner brought up the fact that, and it's according to some parents at the middle schools...
Go put your microphone on.
...approach me.
Talk in your microphone.
Oh.
It's still going on. And where some of the coaches are going over to the middle schools, and they're recruiting some of the athletes into various high schools, and saying that they can go into the Law Academy, or the other academies that are not at R.L. Turner. And so, I know that that's being prevented more, and that they're not allowing that to happen, but it's still happening. It's according to some parents. I don't know anything personally about it, but that's, I've got some phone calls from parents that, and the middle schools, that, that it's still going on.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Shackman, I'd like to thank you for your research on this topic. Thank you for digging up and taking a look at the rules and the laws. I am of the opinion as well that that's truly not a transfer in the true sense. And I hope that our board elects to move this policy in the right direction, so that we can rectify the situation for the future.
Very good. Board members, other points of discussion?
Can Mr. Shore restate his statement?
His pseudo-motion. Yeah, well, it's not, it's not really a motion.
That's what I'm thinking.
Because, because what it is, is it is a contrary but correct view of how the district administration has been interpreting a phrase with good intentions but incorrectly. Sorry.
All right, because that's what it is.
Point of clarification, we, as we, we talk about the term transfers, students who come into an academy are selected for that academy, and then after, or during some point in time...
Selected as a big choice.
They elect not to continue in that academy. And then we have to ensure that we identify that if they elect to go back to another campus, it is truly a transfer then.
That's a transfer.
And they would be ineligible under that, because they've already established first choice.
That's a transfer.
Absolutely.
That's correct.
Very good.
So, well, we'll, obviously, you know, we can take a lot of this and bring you back, something that kind of tries to incorporate all of this and wordsmith it if you like for the next time. Just whatever your direction is.
I think yours doesn't include bringing back Mr. Shore.
Yeah, I, well, the, the one question that I would have, and I agree with you, Frank, that perhaps interpretation is what has, has been at the, the heart of this, but I also want us to make sure that our, whatever we put together moving forward will be inclusive enough so that UIL would be happy with it. Because it seems to me that UIL is saying, we are respecting the rights of the local school board. We wish Austin would do the same thing, you know, because they're saying, if you as a district have a policy that you have options for students, then the ninth grade year will set that, or their first opportunity into the district will set it. And then beyond that, it is a transfer. And so, whatever we need to make sure we have in the language so that we accomplish what it is we're talking about here, I think that's what's appropriate. And so, I, I think my recommendation would be then, that as a board, we're not, we're not going to try to codify policy tonight, but to say, if we have consensus moving forward that that's the direction we want to go, then could the, I, I suggest, Mr. Goode, that the staff bring back to us the recommended verbiage for an amendment updating our policy at our next meeting.
Or path forward if it were necessarily an amendment.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's a better way to say it.
Dr. Burns, also, one point of clarification. Typically, on local policies, do we not request that TASB review them for content?
Yeah, they, as a part of our policy package, they will. And what they typically do is to make sure they're, they're not out of, of legal compliance with the legal, with, with the legal policy. You know, there's legal and local. So they'll get a copy anyway, and they'll be able to look at it and, and help us. We can use their service to help us with it.
Okay.
It's, yeah, but they will give us some review. As long as it's not way out of line, they won't have a problem.
We are not...
Other districts have something similar. They're, we're not the first one to deal with this.
Sure.
We just chose to deal with it in a different way. But, you know, if it's the direction of the board to deal with it in another way, we need some clarification around what is an academy, and that we're not going to call academy of choice a transfer, but we are going to call some things a transfer, because they are.
They are.
Because you live in that zone, and you just can't decide, I want to go to Turner because, and I live next door to Creekview...
Yeah.
...without some kind of process, unless it's a choice application. So we, we've got some kind of massaging to do to figure out, so we have some clarity around it. And then we'll, we'll make sure we've run it by all the, the right players and then bring it back to you.
But are we under a timeframe?
Just the board's.
Okay, I want to make sure that we don't have outside influence.
We are coming up to, we are coming up to academy season, so we'd like to get...
They're also a two-week...
Yeah, and to get the forms clarified and things like that.
Okay.
There's a little bit of urgency there. So January would be something that we'd shoot for, and then also, the board could take the option to waive the second reading, just do a little...
Dr. Burns, for whatever this is worth from this one board member, for that student who is living in the Ranchu attendance zone, who is moving from eighth to ninth grade, who, who legitimately went to the school because they had a program there, he wanted to. I don't think that we need to make any change in our policy to allow that particular student to participate in UIL athletics, because I don't believe that that, I don't believe that that's a transfer. And I think that my belief that that's not a transfer is well-grounded in facts, facts and, and a understanding of the English language.
Yeah. Mr. Shore, re-say that again.
He, he left out a part about where that Ranchview student went to a different high school.
Goes to, goes to, goes to a high school not in the Ranchu attendance zone.
Okay.
Because that high school, that's not Ranchu, has a program that that student wanted to attend, was admitted, was eligible and admitted, okay?
And accepted.
And accepted, okay? Admitted and accepted, okay? But is moving as an eighth grader to ninth grade, that's not a transfer. And I don't believe anybody could contend with legitimacy.
Can, can I just clarify, Hugh? What's the opposite of that? He's moving, but he's not in an academy, then he is asking a transfer, if he's not going for a choice and would be ineligible. In other words, he's in the Ranchview zone, he wants to go to Creekview, just to go to Creekview for whatever reason.
He's got two, he's got two friends that go to Creekview, and he says, I'd like to go to Creekview. That would be a transfer.
But he doesn't have it. He's not in an academy, he's not applying for a particular program at Creekview. He just wants to go to Creekview.
Okay, if...
What is that?
That's a transfer.
Wait, wait, wait. Is he a ninth grader?
He's a ninth grader.
And he's starting the fourth day of ninth grade at Creekview?
Yes.
How's that, how's that a transfer?
It's a transfer.
We'd have a hard time keeping up where everybody's going with Newman Smith.
I thought we're a hybrid. I thought we're a hybrid.
Ms. Klein. We are, but the part of the hybrid is, we have an established attendance zone that says, this is where you should go unless there's some really unique reason, unique being there's a program somewhere else.
In that case, we wouldn't have the situation of, I want to go to Creekview because my buddies go to Creekview.
No, they still have that.
No, but the situation exists.
Yeah.
Okay, but then, then, then the ninth grader has to be smart enough, and if he's been in this district for at least two days, he should be smart, he or she should be smart enough, I want to go to Creekview because they have Law Academy there, and then I can be my buddies as well.
But he's got to be accepted into the Law Academy.
There's still contention, still contingent on that, yeah. But I, but I would contend that you still need to monitor just transfers out of the attendance zone that don't have a program attached.
If there's no program attached, then how do they get in?
But I think in your example, if they'd gone two, two days to Ranchview, they started at Ranchview, and then he says, I'd rather change.
That's a transfer.
That's a change. That's a transfer.
That's a transfer.
I, I think what UIL has said, and what my thought process moving us forward would be, is that we want to say, you make that initial choice prior to coming in ninth grade, you apply and get accepted, and then that would not be considered a transfer.
And you set foot there.
Right, right. And then after you've been there two minutes, you change your mind. That's a transfer.
I have a question, just looking for direction and thinking through the board's pleasure. Programs such as cosmetology, auto technician, automotive, mechanics, are culinary pathway, none of those programs have an application process. They are transfers. Students wishing to, to attend those, request transfer to the school, and then register for the program there. There's, there's not a, those are...
As a ninth grader?
As a ninth grader.
Okay, the, the fact that we say they request a transfer doesn't make it a transfer. Otherwise, I would say that I'm six feet eight, and I'd be playing in the NBA, if you could really, if you could really say something, okay?
Well, I think about tran...
I think it's a difference that you don't have to be accepted to get into the auto tech program at Creekview.
Correct.
If I live in Turner District, I want to go to the auto tech program. I just, I just go, I mean, I'm, I'm transferring. You don't have, the, the auto tech person at Creekview doesn't have to say, yes, I will take you. Fill out your application. I mean, you just...
Mr. Shore, I would say, just about transfer, I'm just, I'm kind of thinking through, why have we thought about it in that way? And I think when we, just thinking about our systems and why we might think about it as a transfer, that when we have a regular attendance zone structure, so I know students' records roll from, you know, Janus Stark Elementary to Field Middle School to R.L. Turner High School. That's the trajectory.
That's the feeder system.
That's the feeder system, and their records automatically roll in our computer system, and then in our, our hard copy system. So I think about transfer as when we are redirecting manually their record to another place because of a choice or option. So, and that's how we've worked through transfer. We're transferring records, we're transferring out of the normal path at which those would progress.
What if you, what if you use the synonym shifting instead of transferring?
Okay, we can use shifting, but for the board's direction and drafting this, to think about all of these programs that would fall under special programs for which there is no application process.
I would say those probably shouldn't be included.
But they're still special, though, you know?
So if I'm going to cosmetology, then this won't apply.
How about if we, how about if, to save time tonight, I think there's a consensus that Metza qualifies as a special program. I don't think there's any dispute that that's...
That's one of many.
Okay, but, but Metza is a special program, okay? We can, we can save for deliberation for another night, auto tech...
Culinary.
Culinary, whatever. And by the way, I don't want anyone hearing those words and thinking that I'm suggesting that culinary and, and anything else is of less value than Metza. They're just different. And we don't need to deal with all of those this evening.
I do think there is some value, and my encouragement would be, there is something to be said about an application acceptance process, and that having relevance to this discussion. And that becomes something of a specialized option as opposed to just a program in a school. And so, I think I would be very comfortable if we targeted, and I don't want my word, special, you know, program, because that was just putting down words to try to get the discussion moving, to hang us up. So I would be very comfortable if my fellow board members are, this adoption, whatever it is we're doing, targeting those special options that we have that are application acceptance oriented.
Any program that requires an application be submitted and, and qualified to be admitted.
So we've put some criteria in what we call a program.
Right, right. Give it some definition.
And the other would then fall under the, the basic of that, that transfer program, which is you are ineligible, because that's not your attendance zone.
Correct.
What I would ask, Mr. Goode, is that we ask staff to visit this and bring it back to us, hopefully in January, but that's a very short turnaround with the holiday. But also, I would ask you to give direction to Ms. Watten, because there's that first question I had about the UIL wording, when maybe it might not be the way it's intended to be. What does someone do, and how do they raise that flag? So, you know, just, so educate, you know, in the future sometime, how that works.
And let me, if I can say one other thing, just for some clarity, and all, all good discussion, because that's how we get better, is continue to look at things and how our policy drives what we do. We do want to point out that all students are eligible to participate. We're talking about a varsity participation, which they've been excluded from. So we could remedy the, remedy that with, with this, by having that. But they are still allowed to participate. We want to make that clear. They're not excluded from that and trying out for teams. They're just not eligible for varsity competition under the current policy. What you're doing with the new policy would be then allowing them to be eligible as freshmen for that varsity, which now they're not. So that, we want to just kind of make that clear, so that's what we would be bringing back to something that, that would clarify that as much as possible, because we, we, I think we've noted tonight, it's kind of complicated.
Ms. Watten.
And I agree with Randy in that it should also involve fine arts, because I think it's also important when you have a super, super band, and everybody wants to go to that super, super band. So I think that's a very relevant.
But they've got fine arts at every campus.
I know, but they have some that are better than others.
We will, we'll still start trying, getting some draft language, Tom, and then we, we'll shoot for January, but give us some flexibility if we're not quite due yet.
Dr. Burns, what I think we've all heard, there's not a real simple, easy solution to accommodate the variability in our programs. We brought this upon ourselves by creating academies, in other words. And so, what we're trying to do now is resolve what we've created. And we have, we have to come up with almost a matrix of, of how we address the variability of students coming into academies, and then potentially exiting academies early. And we've defined, we get into these few words, where, where, where we're going to get hung up on the true definition, and we're going to have to write a book on what is a transfer.
That's why we have staff.
Well, that's, that's fine, but as you indicated, Christmas holidays, there's very little time between now and our next meeting.
Twenty-four hours a day.
We, we don't have the funds to pay them.
Well, we'll make an attempt, and then, but it may take you February 1st, 4th, if you're ready.
And Dr. Burns, we realize also, your first attempt at the verbiage, one, we probably, you should have the confidence that we will not all agree with it.
Absolutely.
And therefore, we're going to go through a second iteration. We will be blessed if we have something by the end of school year.
Oh, I'm more optimistic.
I'm more optimistic, too. I think, and I think Dr. Burns gave us a marche orders that we would like to be available and have things in place for the academy's recruiting season. And I think if this is focused on the programs that have application acceptance process, and picking up the general directions here that we're talking about, I think we can do this. We've got confidence in the board, and, and the sta, and the staff especially being able to do this. And it's, it's the thing to do. We need to make, we need to get updated to what our practice is, and make sure that we are doing everything in our power to maximize opportunity for our academies, because they have programs that change kids' lives.
Mr. Shackman, your point is well-taken. If I may, we may not have the official policy approved by the time all the recruitment starts. It would, therefore, Dr. Burns, become incumbent upon you to ensure that staff realizes what we're trying to accomplish with the policy. So when they interview students, that is an interview process, an acceptance process, they understand what we're trying to accomplish with our policy. And then hopefully, our policy will shortly get caught up with where we're at. So, board members, I think we dialogued enough and given enough content on this, that I think administration basically understands what we're trying to accomplish. We need, we will therefore allow them, if possible, to have something by our next board meeting. If not, it may be February before we have something that's more detailed with the substance that we can actually approve.
Yeah, we'll, we'll shoot for January, you know, of course, I'm looking over here because they'll do all the work, but we'll shoot for January.
Merry Christmas.
They don't have any holiday plans.
Yeah, so, so we'll have something. It may not, but Mr. Goode's point's well-made. It may not be the final one in January. There'll be something in, in February before you finally get it done. I think that's a fair thing to say, is that it may go through another kind of debate and, and kind of discussion of what do we mean with all of this. But we'll have that ready for January, and then, but realistically, it may be February before you get ready.
Well, we'll have two weeks going ahead. We're going to be off after that. Well, we have two weeks, is all we have, because we're gonna be off after that.
So I'm thinking February.
They, they work fast.
If I understand, though, we're also wanting to make sure that we don't move out of any type of compliance with U I L.
Correct.
So, we're gonna have to ensure that someone is.
And there is, there is processes in place by the U I L, under this policy, that you can also apply for a waiver with the state, and they can grant you that, um, that waiver. So there are things in place to, to do that, that would, uh, be available to people, uh, but we'll, we'll be working on it. We'll work, and we've, we've got a pretty good idea, I think, after tonight's discussion and dialogue, to have something for y'all to noodle around and discuss again in January, but realistically, it may be February for you to decide.
Okay. Board members, any additional discussion on this, uh, agenda item? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll move on then to Agenda Item Five, which is comments from board members. Board members, any comments you'd like to make at this time? Mr. Shore.
I just want to applaud the six of you for the diligence that you have applied in the continuing education. It is a privilege and an honor to serve with you guys, and, um, the fact that we've won that award two years in a row from N T A A S B, and the fact that, uh, each of us has the hours that we've accumulated so far is, is a tribute to your commitment, and I applaud you for that.
Any other comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item Six. Closed meeting is authorized under Texas Government Code, including but not limited to Section 551.071, consultation with attorney; 551.072, real property; 551.074, personnel matters; 551.076, security devices; 551.082, school children, district employees, disciplinary matter or complaint; 5, huh? 51.0821, personally identifiable student information; 551.084, investigation. Dr. Burns, I'm not sure about 51.0821, if that's a valid number.
Maybe not.
Anyone?
Fortunately for us, that's not the one we'll be going under.
That's right.
We're going under real property, so.
Okay, with that being said, board members, we are gonna go back to our briefing room and let the audience stay here, and we will hold our discussion in the other room. And we, we will go into closed session at 9:21. We, we have reconvened from closed session at 10:12 P M. Board members, we will first go back to our consent agenda with one item 4B6.
Mr. Goode, I would make a motion that pursue it to discussions.
That we indefinitely table item 4B6. I have a motion.
Second.
A second by Mr. Matthews. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye, or raise your hand, excuse me. That is unanimous. Thank you very much. Board members, was there anything in closed session we wish to discuss in public? Hearing none, seeing none, we will move on, Agenda Item Eight. By my determination, we have reached the end of our agenda, and we are adjourned at 10:13 P M.